That's my assumption.
Yep, automatic it looks in a tough situation.
That would be good.
I.
What is? Gosh, I'm hungry.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Could you please stand if you're able and join us in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson?
You guys bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the opportunity to just be here and do life. God, we say a special prayer for the Canton community as well as the entire nation as we're making transitions. God, I pray for all of our servicemen and women around the city of Canton and in the entire world. I'd also like to say a special prayer for all of the elected officials and the staff in that as we're trying to make hard decisions, that we're slowed down and that we are doing what's in the best interest of the people and that we're hearing your voice. In Jesus's name, amen.
A call to order, our April 3rd, 2025 council meeting. We'll begin with consideration of tonight's agenda. Are any changes, additions, or motions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and second. Need further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion. We do have some guests and visitors join us tonight, and it's my honor to present a proclamation. And this is a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas children are critical to Canton's future success, prosperity, and quality of life. While children are our most valuable resource, they are also our most vulnerable. Children have a right to be safe and an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow in an environment that fosters healthy development. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Canton's families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment and providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas effectively intervening in the lives of children threatened by abuse is a shared responsibility, and Canton's citizens must come together so that the voices of our children are heard by all. We all must ensure that our communities are extending helping hands to children and families in need. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement, and the business community. And whereas by providing a safe and nurturing environment for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Canton's children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of the state and nation. Now therefore I, Bill Grant, Mayor of the City of Canton, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Canton, Georgia, and urge families and communities to become involved in protecting our community's children. And I believe we have here to accept the proclamation, Michelle Meek with the Children's Haven, Sarah Welch with Anna Crawford Children's Center, and Stephanie Cusson with Cherokee D- Facts. So if you would join me at the podium? Thank you for all you guys do, and please thank the kids for the pinwheels. We'll cherish them, so. After the pollen passes, so. Okay, we do have one public hearing to attend to this evening before we begin our business meeting, and that is public hearing for case MPA 2502-001, request to construct two residential units within the island of the cul-de-sac of Laurel Vista Drive and Horizon at Laurel Canyon. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you have stated, this application is seeking to amend the approved conditions for Laurel Canyon. In February of 2005, the conditions were revised to require deconstruction and the entrance to a development agreement between the developer and the city. This particular condition number forty required deconstruction of the water tank to relieve and alleviate some of the water pressure issues that were up there. Also, the master plans has always shown that this water tank was going to be located in the center of the cul-de-sac of that... Gosh, the name of the road just kind of escapes my mind right now, but that was where it has always been shown. So the applicant is requesting to remove the requirement for the water tank and have the cul-de-sac island approved for two additional single-family lots.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. So at this point, we will open up the public hearing for case MPA 2502-001, request to construct two residential units with the island of the cul-de-sac of Laurel Vista Drive and Horizon at Laurel Canyon. We'll begin with the applicant, or anyone in favor of supporting this. Just as a reminder, anyone speaking in favor or opposition, ten minutes total each side.
Good evening. My name is John Gaskin. I'm the applicant for this master plan modification, and I'm here on behalf of the owner's Ballantyne PMC Laurel LLP. The... There's been a lot, as you can tell by the people who are residents are here tonight, there's a lot of opposition, so to speak, to this request, and I would like to address two things and then make a motion or a request on behalf of Mayor and council. One is the water tank issue. We've gone through six months, and in my mind, and I think the city attorney probably could back this up, that that condition expired in 2015. The developers went bankrupt, and then the project went into receivership, so all those agreements, anything pertaining to the water tank, went away in 2015 in terms of that development agreement. And so, in our mind, that issue has been resolved, and if the city were to want a water tank, as a matter of fact, we spoke with Bethany Watson, the city engineer, and basically have some documentation from both parties, the city attorney and the engineer pertaining to the water tank. So in order to amend the master plan, the request, that item, item number forty pertaining to the water tower was one of the things that we wanted to strike, just to, basically to clean up the zoning from a twenty-year-old zoning. So that was the reason that's been added. If you go back through the original zoning, there are requirements for bus stops within the community. There's all kinds of things that just have expired, and in our mind, the water tank is one of them. The request for the two lots in the roundabout has a history a little bit beyond this particular parcel, and it goes back with some conversations we've had with the city about another parcel that's been impacted, and I'm not going to go into those details because it's more than probably what you would like to get into tonight. But in light of the fact that there is a lot of opposition, and these are homeblooded, these are people we've sold lots to, and the fact that we will make sure that the city is completely on board with the water tank issue and the tower issue, what I would like to do is request one that you consider tabling the request tonight and put us on the next set of agendas, and I'm not sure of the exact dates. I'm sure Mr. Turner or Mr. Green can confirm those. So what I'd like to do is, that would give us time, meaning us, maybe to go back, visit with the residents, maybe with the city with a couple of issues, and less completely clear up everything during that thirty days, because a couple of items that have affected this request, or one item in particular, is fairly recent, and it kind of happened about the time that we submitted the rezon... or not the rezoning, but the master plan amendment application. So I would... I'm not going to come back and address the opposition unless there's something I think I could, with my remaining time, that I could lend some clarity to. I would certainly answer any questions that you may have at this time, or certainly after the opposition has spoke. But the request tonight is to table this request until the next set of public hearings to give us time to work out the issues with the city and in particular with the opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskin. Just a point of order for our city attorney. We've already opened and begun the public hearing, so it's too late to consider requests. I mean, we're not, wouldn't be voting on anything tonight anyway, so.
I don't think you planned on it, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gaskin. Is there anyone else here to speak and support, that signed up in support of the application? Okay. We'll now open up to those opposed. We have two residents signed up to speak. We'll begin with Mr. Jeremy Warner. If you would just please come forward to the podium, state your name, address, and your remarks.
Honorable Mayor, and esteemed city council. My name's Jeremy Warner. I'm the president of the HOA for the Laurel Canyon, and I'm here tonight to represent our board and our homeowners in the Horizon Development. I live at 112 Laurel Canyon Trail. On March 17th, I was invited by John Gaskin, applicant for the property owner Ballantyne PMC, to a community informational meeting at their sales center in Horizon. This meeting was to announce the builder's intention for a master plan amendment to build two downsized homes in the middle of what they call a roundabout. We'd like to call it a green space. The meeting was well attended, and homeowners voiced their concerns and opposition to the amendment. Ballantyne PMC has taken the property at the top of the mountain in Horizon and constructed, without any question, beautiful homes overlooking panoramic view of valleys afar. Why would any responsible builder degrade this landscape by building two lower-valued homes in the green space? Why not deed this parcel to the HOA to beautify it as common area? Please take a moment to view the two-page handout I provided of the picture of the parcel. This was an aerial view. It gives you a really good look of what we're referring to. Please give thought to how you would feel having purchased a home of your dreams and envisions of a beautiful centered island landscape, only to find out that the builder decided to amend their building plan and add a home in that green space. This is why our HOA board and our homeowners hope the city council will join us in opposition to this proposed master plan amendment, and I thank you again for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Heather Collins?
Good evening. The last time I met you guys, I was an eight-hour resident of Canton, and now I'm an eight-month resident of Canton and love it. So good evening, Mayor Grant and the city council. Thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to talk about some of the concerns in the community. I represent the many residents behind me and the many that could also not attend tonight. We received a letter yesterday, just yesterday, regarding the request of tabling the rezoning here. That came in about four o'clock. The first time that this was discussed was August the 5th, when the request was made to table the discussion again from the last hearing that they had. That came in to city council via an open records request that I did, and after that, the city council was made aware, or made PMC aware, that if it was denied, they would have to wait twelve months to rezone. So they tabled the discussion, asked to withdraw without prejudice so they could come back and have the conversation again. They wanted to gather more information to come back to the residents. PMC has had over eight months to figure out what they're doing and to regroup on this piece of property in the Horizon part of Laurel Canyon. We, as residents, have been in limbo, and we assure you that we don't really want to be in limbo another month or two, or more than that, as they figure out what they want to do as far as the piece of property and the land and how to deal with the residents. The residents and future owners of Laurel Canyon, because there are some that are future owners that are here that didn't even know that this was happening, would like to have some sort of finality of what's happening in our community. The first concern, and I know there's three that really resonate with most of the residents, the first is the water pressure, and I know we've had conversations, and Bethany's done testing, and I can tell you, my husband's a home inspector, and we've done testing. I live at the top of the hill, and our water pressure is very inconsistent, and that's probably in some of the letters that you've received. The inconsistent water pressure is something that's still very questionable. It's a pressure piece, it's a flow piece, and it really depends on when your neighbors are showering and how that works for the rest of the residents up there. There's about a hundred and fifty feet difference between the bottom of the hill where that pump is and the top of the hill where we receive water, let alone there's ten homes or lots that are still unoccupied, less the two that they're planning on putting at the center, that would also adversely affect the water. So we want obviously some finality on that. The second concern is sheer property values of Laurel Canyon. I'm not here to just represent Horizon. I'm here representing all of Laurel Canyon. When you look at the values that these two homes will probably bring, I don't, I can't, I literally, we've done a lot of research. We haven't had a home. There is one in England that is placed at the center of a roundabout. There is not one anywhere that we have found, anywhere in Georgia, and because of the concerns that we have, of those homes are going to be sitting in a fishbowl. So when you look at PMC after the community meeting, their intent is to either sell those homes, which are listed right now with a lot premium of $170,000, or to spec those out and put two spec homes there that are going to, in their minds, sell between one to $1.4 million, which is the average sales price at the top of the hill currently. I believe, along with realtor professionals that are in our community, that that is going to be a stretch, that people are not going to purchase a home inside a roundabout with zero privacy because they'd be staring at all the other homes. In Laurel Canyon, we can't put privacy fences because of our HOA community, so you're going to get a back view and a front view in that community. The other thing to consider is just the sheer property value of Laurel Canyon. When you look at the houses that sell at the bottom of the hill, whether it's in the Longleaf subdivision or the High Point subdivision, those homes are looked at, when they are being sold currently today, the specs that they're getting pulled from are from the Horizon subdivision. So when you look at the latest sale in Longleaf, it sold for eight hundred, over $875,000 because of the specs and the comps that they're getting from the top of the hill. So when you look at the, if, you know, PMC in general sells those homes for $700,000 to $600,000 because of where they're located and people probably not wanting to purchase homes in the middle of a cul-de-sac or roundabout, whichever you want to prefer, you know, call it, that's going to be a concern for all the members of the Laurel Canyon community because it's going to devalue their homes, and that is something that is a huge concern. In addition to that, asking for, you know, what is their home going to assess for as far as taxes go, because their values are going to drop. So that is a huge concern for a lot of the members of the community. Lastly is the concern that this was never zoned for two homes, right? It was zoned for a water tank. If you were purchasing up there, you paid a hefty premium and did your homework by looking at the city zoning plan and said, okay, there's no homes there. It's going to be potentially a water tank or a water pump or something along those lines, and that's not what the homeowners signed up for. PMC has charged those homeowners anywhere from $100,000 to a $300,000 premium for the view that they get. Every homeowner in that cul-de-sac will lose that view on the front side of their home by putting two homes there, because they will absolutely be towering over the other homes. So just something to consider. In addition to that, many of the homeowners weren't even notified that they were getting homes built there. So we have people that are in this room today that when they purchased their home, they did not know that two homes were getting there, going there, until they saw it on our Facebook group that this was, the public hearing was happening. So a lot of concerns, and I know that, you know, obviously, the representatives from PMC want some, a little more time to deal with the opposition, as they say, there's not really anything that's going to change, right? We have a water concern. Our home values, we want protected. We want to make sure that it's beautified for the community, and those are the things that are the most important to our community. We aren't, when we attended the community meeting, one of the first things, or actually the first thing that was mentioned was, this isn't about you guys, it's about our profit. And that is what is being told to the community members that live in that community, is there is one thing, and it is about profit for PMC, and for us, it's about our community and preserving our community, preserving our home values, and preserving where we live and representing Canton. Thank you very much for your consideration. We encourage you to take the vote, not kick the can down the road, because not much is going to change in thirty days. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. No outbursts, please. Thank you. Mr. Pepper's time left for the applicant, if...
Five minutes and forty-six seconds.
Mr. Cusson, is there anything you would like to respond to? I know you said you may or may not, but...
No, sir. Anything I'd like to respond to, only if there were any questions or comments, I'll answer those, but otherwise, I'll just forfeit the five minutes.
Any questions council have for the applicant will be made through staff, so. Okay. Thank you. So at this point, we will close the public hearing, and we will open it up to council for discussion. Any questions for Mr. Green or any comments? Ms. McGru?
Thank you. Mr. Green, I've heard a couple of terms tossed around, and I want to be sure on what we're being asked to vote. Are we voting on a zoning, a rezoning, or are we voting on a master plan amendment?
You're voting on a master plan amendment. The property will remain zoned as TDMU Plan Development mixed use.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Green, so when we met with the applicant the other day, and I just want to ask this question, so that we do get it stated on record, but I am curious to know what was shared with the homeowners when they purchased their lots and their land at the time of purchase?
That obviously I do not know, but I can ask Mr. Gaskins to provide what information must have vouched to any property owner or potential property owner.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we will consider, take this matter into consideration at our August 17th meeting. So thank you, Mr. Green.
April 17th.
April 17th, so. So when I say August, trust me, April 17th, so. Trying to pull a fast one over on you, so. Sorry, pollen is getting to me, so. So we will move into our business meeting. If anyone would like to exit now, you're more than welcome to stay for the entire, but just please do so orderly and quietly. So thank you for coming. Again, if you could do so orderly and quietly, please. Council, you have in your packet the two sets of minutes, one from the draft minutes from our council retreat, held March 13th through the 15th, and a set of minutes from our draft minutes from our council meeting on March 20th. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions?
If there are... I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion approved in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion. We have informational items this evening. You have in your packet a review of the January financials. Mr. Ingram, anything to point out?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Just a couple of points. One, January, as you will see, was fairly insignificant, didn't have a lot of significant events in it. If you do have any questions on that, I'd be more than happy to answer those. Mr. Luckett, our finance director's here as well, so hopefully one of us will be able to answer those questions. If not, at the next meeting on April 17th, we're going to post the February financials so that we can get up to speed. We do appreciate your patience as we've been working. We've got a new finance director on board, so we're trying to get everything back up to speed after the audit and all that, so we do appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Any questions? Is there any announcements this evening? We will move into our ten-minute public input. We have one person signed up, Mr. Kendall Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Kendall Jones. I'm at 222 Hope Grove Lane, Canton, Georgia 30114. I'm coming tonight to speak to some items that will be discussed in new business under items 12A and 12B concerning the TBG residential. You received an email from me earlier in the week. I trust that you received that, and it gave more detail, but I wanted to, in the public forum, share some bullet points from that, if I might, just in support. First thing is, is that the, two things are being asked, well, one thing is being asked, and then one other from the housing authority. The one is about the $500,000 loan to TBG to build the senior housing at Summit at Hickory Creek, and then also the housing authorities being asked to do, or there's, the GIC is being asked to do a letter of support for the project. And so the first thing is just to remind, for everybody's information, that there's a need there that exists for that product. There was a housing study that was done several years ago, commissioned by the city, that stated there was a critical need for senior housing, and also the National Low Income Housing Coalition gap report states that in the state of Georgia, for every 100 households, at 50% of AMI, which is about $50,000 to $60,000, there are only 54 available and affordable units. So there's definitely a need for that type of housing in the community. The side benefit of building senior housing and having that being occupied is that if there's 96 units that are occupied in that development, then those 96 units out in the community, that can be occupied by others. You know, the council had made a vote on whether to classify it as affordable family or affordable senior, and affordable senior is now the one before the council, but that has a side benefit for people who are nonseniors as well. The, as far as the $500,000 loan, this is basically the same request that was brought to the council last year when TBG made their li-tac application last year, and the board approved that in May, on the May 2nd board meeting, and that was money, as you might recall, came from the ARPA funds, so no taxpayer money was involved, and that money will be made as a loan. So obviously, at some point in time, that will be come back to the city, so the money can benefit two endeavors. Number one, can benefit the process of trying to build this housing project, but also will come back to the city to be used as the city deems fit. And these measures are just done to help TBG gain enough points in the li-tac process to gain approval for this project. I explained in my email that there has been now two attempts to have senior housing li-tac applications from two different companies trying to pass that, and they did not reach the level of approval from DCA. So these points that would be gained from the loan and also... So these points that would be gained from the loan, and also from the letter of support from the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, might be enough to push them over the approval threshold. And then just for the last reminder, that the alternative to this project being passed and moved through, is that it would revert to its original form of two hundred and fifty-one units that could be at market rate housing for seniors. And so that option increases the impact on services, impact on traffic, as some people have already expressed concern about from the last meeting. But that option also doesn't meet the need. Because that same GAAP report I mentioned earlier, for every hundred households at a hundred percent of AMI, there are a hundred and six available affordable units. So what we have is a, an overabundance of market rate housing, but not enough for affordable housing. So I urge you to, to consider passing that. I understand the vote is not until April seventeenth, not August seventeenth. That will be the vote. But I encourage you, when that vote comes up, to approve that loan, so that we have an opportunity to build this project. And those, for those people who say, show me the data, and we've talked about this. Our research shows that for affordable housing that is well-built and well-maintained, it raises the value of the property around it by an average of two point four percent. Additionally, the state also has a Lytec program that mirrors the federal Lytec program. And UGA did a study and showed that for every dollar invested in the state Lytec program, it generated five dollars and twenty-seven cents of economic activity. So I like to say that this project makes sense, because it meets the need that is out there for affordable senior housing, but it also makes dollars and cents. It makes economic sense as well for both the city and for the community. And so I want to thank you for the opportunity to share. We have a group of people here that are dressed in green, come, have come behind me to help and be here in support of this project. So I want to acknowledge their presence. And then we want to know that we, we appreciate the deliberatives that you have, and that, as Ms. Johnson said, and the, and the implication, there are hard decisions that have to be made. But I encourage you on the seventeenth to make, approve this, this request for the loan, so that hopefully, we can get this across the, the, the finish line. Last thing, just to say, who might be in the senior housing? I was working with a client last week who is a senior. She is homeless, she gets eighteen hundred dollars a month from, for social security. So what she does is she stays in the Motel Six until the money runs out, and then she stays in, outside, until she has enough money again to go back into the Motel Six. So for her, the rent would be anywhere from eight seventy-five to a thousand dollars a month. So eight seventy-five, that's still forty-eight percent of her income, so she would still be classified as severely cost overburdened. But at least she would have a place to live that she can afford. And so that's just one example of who might be in this project. So, once again, thank you for your time and attention, very much, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We have two items of old business this evening. Item A, discussion and possible action on resurfacing intergovernmental agreement with Cherokee County. Ms. Penley?
I lost my notes, sorry. Okay, here we go. So I'm here for discussion and possible action on the road resurfacing intergovernmental agreement with Cherokee County. Just to give a quick recap from the last meeting, we are looking at, uh, resurfacing Laurel Canyon Parkway from Highway one forty to the gate at Soleil. We are also looking at resurfacing Great Sky Parkway from Highway one forty to the roundabout at Reservoir. And Fountain Oakway, we also put an alternate, or like an optional road in there, depending on funding, which is Northside Parkway. The, we got the bids back from Cherokee County, and we had originally estimated that they were going to be over one point two million dollars for the, the Elmeg roads, along with the optional road. They actually came in much cheaper. They came in three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars less than what we had expected, and we had based those on last year's numbers for that awarded contract. So the original roads, Laurel Canyon, Great Sky, and Fountain Oakway, came in at six hundred and sixty-three thousand and twenty-nine cents. With the optional road of Northside Parkway, came in at two oh four, two oh four one hundred and ten and forty, one hundred and ten and forty-three cents, thousand and forty-three cents, which is a total project cost of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and three dollars and seventy-two cents. So we're asking for approval of that, and to go into an agreement with Cherokee County. I put a, I don't know if it's in your packet, but the intergovernal, intergovernmental agreement with Cherokee County has the, the new numbers, the eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand. In it, we will not receive the signed copy from the county until after the fifteenth. And then we would ask that the mayor sign that copy if approved. Do y'all have any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Penley. Good news on the cost savings there, so any questions for Ms. Penley?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the city entering into an intergovernmental agreement with Cherokee County for two thousand and twenty-five road resurfacing, not to exceed the amount of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and three dollars and seventy-two cents.
Second.
A motion, a second, any further discussion?
Could we just add to the motion authorizing the mayor to sign it after the county has executed?
Ah, so moved.
Okay. And second, did I get?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. And item B, discussion and possible action on high friction surface treatment on city streets.
Yes, so I'm here for discussion and possible action on the high friction surface. This, this, a quick recap, we put an RFP out back in January, we received no bids. So we set out for some quotes. We received two quotes. This is a little bit harder to find than what I had expected, so we, we were able to get two quotes. The lowest quote came in at a hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars for the high friction surface. It would go from, on Laurel Canyon, up the, the hill at Laurel Canyon at one forty, which that is the steepest grade that we have in the city limits on that particular hill. And then we are also, I believe it's nine hundred feet that we're looking at doing on that particular area. And there's maps in your packet that show exactly where it would be. Is also, we're looking at the hill off Great Sky Parkway, there's a large hill there that we're looking, putting at the high friction surface treatment there as well. And it starts about Crimson Morning Way, I believe. And it's the same thing, it's around like nine hundred feet of, of road. This project would go in conjunction with the paving. That is something that we would work out with the paving company, the allied paving that awarded, that will receive the bid with the county. So we would work that out in conjunction with them. And this would help greatly on not just the safety issue, but it helps with the traction and, you know, accelerating and braking on those particular areas of those roads. So I think that's all I have. Do y'all have any questions on that?
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Penley? Mr. Warner?
Ms. Penley, so you mentioned that you submitted an RFP with no responses. And so then you reached out to, I guess, previous providers?
Yes, one of the companies that we actually reached out to, it's, I have it here, it's the, they actually have a quote on it as well. It's Northwest Georgia Paving. When we originally looked at doing this, we reached out and got a quote from them, and we realized how expensive it was. So therefore, we issued an RFP for it. And they, they did not bid on this project. However, we did ask them for a quote, they were still higher than our other quote. So, but that was where we were.
So the difference in between that company and what you selected, was, what's the difference? Or, or to ask a better way, how confident are you that you're basically at market, or you're not overpaying? If no one has responded to the RFP? First company has given you a price, and they are trying to price themselves out of it, because they don't necessarily want to do it?
Well, I think, I'll say this, so we even reached out to GDOT, trying to find out what materials they used, if they had contractors that they used. And they could not provide us any information, because they use, I think it's more for like bridges, is what the aggregate that they use. We couldn't get any clear answers from them. This was a company that they said they have, they have consulted in the past, the north, the Northwest Georgia Paving, that is the one that did come in higher. I honestly believe, because I talked to him, and when I spoke with him, it was almost as if they would rather just quote it out and not have to go through having to do, like, they don't really submit for a proposal because of the work that goes into the proposal. And that's why I was like, you know, we've got that quote from them originally, and they also originally had quoted to pave those areas, which we did not need them to do that. But like I said, they did come in higher than the, the WJ Surface Treatment. And it's the same thing, I went back and made sure that they were comparable, that it was the same type of quote. Does that make sense? Did that answer your question? I feel like it didn't. Sorry.
So these vendors do more than just the high surface friction treatment, and typically would bid on larger paving projects. But we need specific to this particular area. So our options would have been not going with Cherokee County on paving, and paving our own sections of roadway, and including this alternate surface in those two areas. But we probably would have paid more, because we would have had a higher mobilization cost, because we're not joining with the county. So, that makes sense.
And as you mentioned, pointed out, the paving contract came in over three hundred thousand dollars less than anticipated and budgeted, which would more than cover the, the treatment, which is a hundred and forty-four thousand, is that correct?
Yes, yes, one forty-three, I believe.
Anything else? Mr. Tullman?
Mr. Peppers' point was well-taken, I think I may understand it, but I want to make sure. So the aggregate that we're talking about for the high friction, doesn't require specialized equipment? It can be used with regular paving equipment?
No, it does require specialized equipment. It is a, um, hang on, I have it here. It is a, it's an aggregate, and then there is a, so they'll pave the road, we'll have them pave the road. They will not stripe, they won't be able to do anything else to it. And we have to let the road set for thirty days before we can put on the aggregate. And then there is a poly, polymer resin that goes over it, and they have like a, a machine that puts that on. And then it will have to set for, I believe it's another thirty days before we can actually stripe it, before we can do the thermo striping. However, we can put down the temporary striping in the meantime, but it's, we've got kind of a sweet spot there, especially with the paving of it, and then the actual putting of the high friction surface treatment.
When they're, when they're finished with their work, obviously, roadway traffic is fine.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Ms. Penley, the, the high friction surface part of that, I guess the first part of the question is rhetorical, with the vibration and the noise of that, and hopefully, people will slow down on that stretch of highway. I guess the second part of that question is, is there any special, how long is that going to last? The high friction part versus a regular paving? Does it last any longer or less time in terms of maintenance?
From when, when I spoke to the gentleman at WJ Surface Treatment, he, because I, that was one of my concerns. Because you're looking at, generally with paving, say, eight to ten years before a road needs to be repaved. And he said it should withstand that. Depending on the traffic, if it was a major thoroughway, then it would probably be a little bit different. It probably would not last that long, but considering it's the entrance in and out of a neighborhood, he said that that should not be a problem. And I can also get some more information from him on that. There was an excellent YouTube video that I really wanted to send y'all, but I didn't think it was appropriate to go in your packets. So that really showed the process of what they're going to be doing, so.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll watch that tonight.
Anything else? Ms. McGrew?
I'd like to make a motion, please, to award the high friction surface treatment to WJ Surface Treatment in the amount not to exceed a hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Second.
Motion, a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Penley.
Thank you. And please send me the video.
Okay, we have several items of new business only for discussion this evening, so nothing for potential, possible action this, tonight. Item A, discussion of their quest by TBG Residential for a five hundred thousand dollar loan from the city as part of their low-income housing tax credit, Lytec, application for the Summit at Hickory Creek project. Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As has been expressed in previous meetings, in regards to this project, TBG has submitted a letter requesting part of their Lytec application would include a five hundred thousand dollar loan from the city of Canton. TBG residential staff members are here. If you'll allow them to do a brief presentation on this matter, and I'll answer any questions you might have in regards to this.
Okay. Okay with council?
Yes, yes.
No formal presentation tonight, guys, just a quick few minutes of your time. So it's nice to see you all again. You guys know why we're here. So just as, as Ken mentioned, before we get into the loan, I do just want to quickly touch on last council meeting and just say, you know, obviously, the outcome of not rezoning to family, I get it. I understand that, you know, the council has lots of decisions to make to do what's best for your city, and we always just appreciate the opportunity to come to you guys with different ideas as developers. That's all we're good for, is coming with lots of different ideas of how we can make our application the most competitive way. So I just want to say, worth that meeting. Thank y'all for just considering it, and the thoughtful conversations that went into that discussion about the loan. As you guys know, it's a five hundred thousand dollar loan, and it's to support ninety-six units of senior affordable housing. This would get us one extra point on our application, exact same as last year. As I mentioned, or I mentioned last meeting, that the five hundred thousand dollars, that essentially equates to five thousand dollars a unit, when you do the math. In comparison in other cities, what we see a lot of, you know, all the deals that were awarded last year in the other metro category, which is where Canton Falls had cities, you know, contribute anywhere from one million to two million dollars, which was around, depending on the size of the deal, around fifteen thousand to thirty thousand dollars a unit. I say this just because your contribution, the city's contribution, goes a long way in this deal, in this development. Five hundred thousand dollars gets us one point, where in some other cities, you might have had to contribute a lot more. So with that in mind, it does go a long way, and is really meaningful in helping to contribute to that attainable housing that you guys have said is so important for your seniors. You know, we heard it last year, we've heard in the last few council meetings, that senior housing is a priority for Canton. And, you know, we hope that we can be a small part of creating that attainable housing for seniors, and I'll let Anna Marie's kind of...
Yeah, we did want to emphasize again on the loan, that it is fully repayable to the city with, it would be structured through the MOU, with the Housing Authority, again, so the city would not be making a direct loan to the development, and that it was funded last year with the ARPA money that the city received, which can be used for this purpose, for affordable housing. And since we did receive almost unanimous support for this loan last year, and our deal is largely exactly the same, providing affordable housing for seniors, we do respectfully request the support for this funding, again, on our application. And we did want to mention the GIC as well, I know that's not this line item, but we are requesting that support again, as well as that is a key part to our score for our tax credit application.
If there's any questions, we're obviously here, and we'll be here, and so on and so forth. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, do you have anything else before council discussion?
No, sir, I'm here to answer any questions any of the council members might have.
Okay. Thank you, so just for clarification, again, the, we discussed this project last time, and I think the sentiment was that we wanted to reserve the project for affordable senior housing, which our studies... which our studies and all the data we have shows that we certainly need more of. And I think council seemed supportive of that. And again, this, this project, same circumstances, city and council voted last time to support the project with the $500,000 loan. Again, that would go through the Canton Housing Authority. Again, nothing has changed. The need has probably only gotten greater instead of less. So, I think, you know, that's, if we could support the project, we would be talking about, you know, 96 additional units for housing, our seniors who, who are in need of affordable housing. So, any comments?
Just one, Mayor, if I may. Just, I think this has been stated before, but GIC is 20 years old. There are usually five or so cities that enter the GIC program each year. Even after you quote-unquote graduate after three years, you are still eligible to provide a loan. I believe that's correct, Mr. Patton?
Yes, as an alumni community, the city of Canton will graduate out of the program at the end of this year. We will automatically be an alumni community for two years. After that two-year period, maybe even with graduation, we would submit an, if you will, an application to be a alumni community, and those award points are still eligible for communities that are alumni.
So, if you do the math, as Ms. Buckner has stated, it is a point, and that point is held, if you will, by as many as 100 cities after 20 years, at roughly five cities per year. So, it's an extremely competitive environment, and that one precious point means a lot. So, I just hope that, I hope that we can move forward at the next meeting and gain approval for, for that, that ask.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mr. Patton, just out of curiosity, will TBG be coming back to us for the same, with the same request for Phase Two, or does this request take care of the entire project?
This request is for the current project and proposal for Phase One. They potentially could come back for a request again for Phase Two.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tolan?
I know when we approved this last year, and just for the record, it was ARPA funds that we used for this, to set aside for this loan, and I believe we have pulled those funds into the general fund, so how would that work this time?
So, last year was the last year that we had to account for ARPA fund expenditures. We did all of that. So, in this case, we would be making a loan from the general fund to the Housing Authority, and then the Housing Authority would turn around and make a loan to the project.
But it is, there are ARPA funds, what used to be ARPA funds in the general fund that we could use for this purpose?
Correct. We received a little over $10 million that we were allowed to absorb into our general fund.
Anything else? Okay. Again, we will discuss this further at our next meeting, and council have an opportunity to put their money where their mouth is, I guess, so to speak. We'll move into item D, which is related, I know it was mentioned, but discussion of the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing GIC Point Award Review Process for Low-Income Housing Tax Credit, Lytec Applications. Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. This year, the city of Canton has received two formal requests for the approval of the award of a GIC point. TBG Residential has requested the city through the GIC Housing Team award that GIC point for their project. We also received a request, I had one telephone conversation, an email follow-ups with Infill Housing Incorporated. They are associated with the Macon Housing Authority, and they are looking at a Lytec application for Lakeview Apartments. And they have requested that the city council award the GIC point to their proposed project. We also received a letter of interest, if you will, from REA Ventures. They work in the arena of Lytec projects as well. They do not have a specific project at this time in mind, if you will, with the City Canton Properties, but they are still looking for properties and projects. There has been discussions with them of the possibility of the old McFarland's IGA site as a possibility for a mixed-use project that could include some Lytec housing, but they've not come back and indicated that they've got an agreement with the Development Authority to move on that. But because we have received the two formal requests this year, and had discussions with other Lytec-type developers, I put together a draft proposal form for city council to consider for next year's GIC cycle that's included within your package, since we are having more than one request for that GIC point award as well. And I can tell you that Gwinnett County, in my discussions with them, they do a request for proposals, if you will, as well. And Gwinnett County had 16 applications for the award of their GIC point last year. City of Vallejay, they went through a, an award process and interviewed developers as a part of their program. I'm here to answer any questions, and if you have any questions in regards to TBG and their request, they're here to answer. I'm not sure if anybody from Infill was here. I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patton. So, just for clarification, we have one GIC point the city has that we can award per year.
Correct.
And when does that have to be rewarded?
The application deadline on the 9% application process is May 16th, so that award needs to occur before that application deadline. That's why it's on the agenda here in April, so hopefully there'll be a decision made by the council at the meeting on the 17th.
Okay. And then the, I guess, the award rating system that you put in our packets, you said for next year. And so, we would make a decision of the two projects we have to award the GIC point to one of those, correct?
Yes, sir. We had both of those requests come in before I'd put together that draft, and I didn't think it was fair to go after the fact of receiving the request to have them follow up with the request form that I put together in the draft.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patton. Any questions or comments?
In regards to the points, if I heard that right, so only one point can be awarded per year, was that?
Correct.
So, probably putting the cart before the horse here, but for Phase Two, that you mentioned, would, would they be seeking another point?
There's a possibility that they could request award of a GIC point with a future project.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Couple of points. If I may. It's, it's, it's interesting, intriguing, actually, is probably a better word, that we do have a couple of suitors here. One that we don't have a lot of information on, the other one is an existing Lytec project, which sounds like it's in pretty dire need of rehab. So, I like the idea that somebody's stepping up to potentially do that. It's my personal belief that, that this might be a good year to add affordable housing, attainable housing to the city, and just kind of thinking it through, maybe next year is a good year to, to do a rehab. My guess is, if TBG is awarded by the city council, the GIC point and the loan, and awarded the deal by DCA, that it's probably going to be a little bit more than a year before those 96 units are, are occupied. But it is, it is good to see the activity on the Lytec side, because we definitely need it in the city. That's been demonstrated time and time again, so really super supportive of that. I just wanted to reiterate, and sorry, guys, for sounding like a broken record here, the TBG project, if you'll remember, is 96 units, only two of which will be three bedrooms, which would make it more naturally attractive for seniors. It's really important, when we get to the next meeting, if council is in agreement, that we move forward with both of these facets of the, of the contract, if you will, because even with both of those, the loan and the GIC point, that would put TBG at 83 points, which is exactly what they scored last year. So, again, extremely competitive environment, and, you know, I'm crossing my fingers that, that if we are successful in getting this through council, that they are successful with, with DCA. So, this, this project is, is pretty important to the future of the folks in our city that are in need of affordable housing. This is kind of, again, I said it last time, this is kind of a burden-hand, an opportunity for us to put our money where our mouth is, as the mayor said, and I just hope that we have the intestinal fortitude to move forward with it, so that these guys have a chance to get their project through DCA. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Patton. And item C, discussion of the North Canton Cottage Village Project and Seal Bid Process. Mr. Patton, again?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Coming out of the city council retreat, staff was instructed to put together a Seal Bid process, if you will, bring back to city council some suggested stipulations, as well as a timeline for the Seal Bid process. Stipulations and talking with staff that we came up with, and, you know, comments that council members made at the retreat, develop the property in accordance with approved civil site plans, provide copy of HOAD covenants for city review and approval prior to the final plat approval by the city, no more than 10% rental units of the primary residential structures. Basically, that means one out of the nine could be a rental unit, and the ADU may also be a rental unit. Timeline for the Seal Bid process, property tour would be scheduled for May 14th, onsite, 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock. What I read in OCGA in regards to municipal disposition of properties, it does require a legal advertisement, not less than 15, not more than 60 days before bid opening. So, with that, legal advertisement to the Tribune would be May 10th. Advertisement would run in the Tribune, May 23rd. Questions and answers would have to be received by the city prior to noon on May 28th. Bid's middle deadline would be June 11th, no later than 1:00 p.m. Bid opening would be scheduled for June 18th, 4:00 p.m. This would be brought back to city council for discussion, July 3rd, city council meeting and potential decision of an award would be July 17th. And there is a draft Seal Bid document that I put together, emailed out. I don't know if Mr. Dyer has any other comments or suggestions relative to the language of the Seal Bid, but I would work with the city attorney to streamline or make any amendments that he feels are necessary. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patton. Appreciate your work on this. The city council at our retreat had promised, made a decision on, on this direction, we're moving forward on this, this project, so we're excited to see some progress happen on that, and, and excited to see what the bid results generate there, so, so we have those to discuss. So, any questions?
I have a question for, maybe for Mr. Dyer. In the packet that Mr. Patton provided, it says, let me just see what item this is. Anyway, and under the terms and conditions applicable to the sale, it says, and I quote, "No more than 10% rental units of the primary residential structures." How do we manage that?
It would have to be in the covenants, which, that's why we need to review the covenants before. So, the, the neighborhood would agree that there could only be one rental unit. So, the risk the city has is, in the future, the neighbors could all say, "We don't care about that anymore," because those are typically enforced by the residents. And then, I don't know what the city would do then, so.
But the original covenants can state that that's the case in perpetuity?
Yes.
Okay.
They could choose not to enforce it, or they could unanimously all agree to change it. City within me put in position of having to deny COs and trying to kick people out of houses, and that doesn't seem likely.
Is there any scenario you can think of? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Any, any scenario you can think of that that would make sense for a community to want to support?
Lots of, lots of communities have rental caps.
No, 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 I'm sorry, lifting the rental cap.
If everybody wanted to rent them, that would be the only reason. No, it doesn't. I mean, I, I think people would, hopefully, be people buying in because they didn't want to have rental properties in their neighborhood.
Yeah.
And we keep it that way, but we can't predict the future, and that's, that's the best we can do, is make it be a covenant that is enforceable by, at least one resident can enforce it.
It's a big, obviously, it's a big problem, not, not only in Canton, but all over the country.
No. City attorneys are constantly discussing, asking whether anybody's got a good idea about it, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anything else? Mr. Ochs?
Real quick, I don't know how we would do it, but, but I guess whoever wins the, the bid, trying to, you know, educate them more on the Down Payment Assistance Program to maybe utilize that in their marketing package, might be a good idea, you know, just to try to push that towards hopefully getting first-time homebuyers to look in that area. I don't know exactly how you would do that, except maybe just encourage it.
That could be addressed during the onsite property tour, if you will, on the front end of the Seal Bid process.
I was thinking, it makes a good spot to sort of try to market it a little bit, and I hope whoever gets the bid will, will look into that, so.
Especially if they went ahead and started talking to a couple lenders and had that ready to go.
Right.
Make it easier to sell them. Mr. Patton and I had exchanged emails about clarifying the one condition about using approved site plans. To make it clear, it's pre-approved, the plans you've pre-approved. And then I also thought about also making it clear that the contract would have no due diligence period, that all the due diligence would be done on the front end before the bids.
Anything else?
And one last thing, Mr. Mayor, council members, if you recall at the retreat, I did tell you that I'd already received one letter of intent purchase. They, if city council approves the Seal Bid process on the 17th, they will be notified, as well as some developers that have expressed interest in partnering with the city on this project.
Great. It's great to know there's interest in it, and I think it's a very innovative approach, and thank you, Mr. Patton, for your work, and for council for moving forward on, on this project soon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Item D, discussion of Task Order 8 from Keck and Wood for the Prominence Point Parkway Intersection Improvement Project, Rightaway Acquisition Services, in the amount of $30,800. Mr. Ingram?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council. Just upon order, the item D, E, F, and G are all supposed to be presented by Ms. Bethany Watson. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight, so I'm going to stand in her place and present these. If there's any questions that council has on these items that I or Mr. Peppers can answer, we'll be more than happy to give you a response as soon as possible, no later than the 17th. On this item, this is Task Order 8 from Keck and Wood. As you're probably aware, they're doing some work on the intersection at Prominence Point Parkway, and this is an engagement to have them look at acquisitions for rightaways regarding the intersection. Riteaways regarding the intersection. So, happy to answer any questions or record those for, uh, future answer.
Any questions on this item? Okay. Item D, discussion of Crown Castle Agreement for Utility Relocation for the West Main Street Pedestrian Corridor Project?
Yes, as, uh, we're, we're proud to state that, uh, we're doing a lot of underground burials for infrastructure. What you have in front of you is a requisite, uh, request from Crown Council, Crown Castle, uh, to put a four-inch pipe, approximately five hundred foot, uh, to bury the infrastructure in the West Main area, that, on that West Main Corridor project. Now, part of that project is going to be funded by Georgia Power because they're going to share in that pipe, uh, so I think about fifteen thousand dollars to Georgia Power, but Crown Castle's going to bill them directly. We're just going to pay Crown Castle and engage them at the price of fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Any questions on this item?
I do have one.
Yeah, Mr. Watson?
Mr. Ingram, uh, the partnership with Georgia Power, would that, is, is there a possibility of that, uh, extending also to when we address, uh, downtown as well?
I'm, I'm-
Burying, burying the, uh, utilities? Would we also be able to partner with Georgia Power then?
Well, Crown Castle may not have some utilities in certain areas, so it may just be Georgia Power at that instance, but, uh, I would, yeah, I would certainly agree that, you know, if there's an opportunity exists that we could partner with Crown Castle, Windstream, or anyone else, we would do so, in joint trenches, pipes, whatever, yeah. I hope so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We have, um, I guess, ongoing dialogue with Georgia Power about partnering, eventuality and, and anticipation of hopefully burying those utility lines in, in downtown, so.
I will warn it, warn you, though, it will be a little bit more expensive in the-
I never have a meeting with Georgia Power representatives, I don't bring that up, and ask for mercy, so. Okay. Item, uh, item F, discussion of Canton Water Pollution Control Plan Expansion to Six MGD, project schedule extension request from Atkins Realis for the additional CM and RPR services, and the amount of four hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Mr. Ingram?
Yeah, this hurts me to state the obvious, but we were supposed to be finished with that water pollution control plant in September. That has, September of last year, not Sep-, uh, September of twenty-four, then the revised due date, I mean, the revised completion date is December of this year, December of twenty-five. Atkins is approached, has approached the city and requested, uh, four hundred fifty-nine thousand, four, up to four hundred fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars of additional funds to compensate them for that extended period. Um, I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered as it relates to, uh, that request, and for clarification of the timeline and what's caused that and the reasons, and for that reason, I would suggest to the council that y'all request Atkins come and make a presentation to y'all on the seventeenth, help explain the reasons for the request, and clarify the timeline associated with this request, and that would just be my suggestion, and we'll be more than happy to reach out to them and request that if it pleases the council.
That's a great suggestion, and I believe, I won't speak for council, but I would, I'd certainly love to hear from them personally, so, council, you good with that?
Yep.
And if that's the seventeenth or, uh, whatever earliest possible meeting they could attend to, to do that, so.
I'll do so, yes, sir.
Okay. Awesome. Item G, discussion of the award of Task Order Six, Addendum for Two, uh, Addendum Two for supplemental services for Brown Industrial Booster Pump and Waterline to Blacken Beach in the amount of forty-three thousand dollars, one hundred and seventy, forty-three, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Forty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, so Kelly threw me off there.
I can't, I can't do two things at once. If council, uh, will recall, we, uh, at the Brown Industrial, uh, Water Tank and Pump Station, we removed the Brown Industrial tank, and we put in place of it a water, uh, booster pump station. Um, there's a lot of aged infrastructure in that area, and to probably oversimplify it, when they've gotten into the ground, pipes weren't where they were supposed to be, they've had to do further investigation, moving lines and such, um, so they've come to us and asked for an additional scope, compensation for an additional scope, this is work that we've asked them to do, uh, in addition to the original contract. It's forty-three thousand, one seventy-five, not to exceed, uh, so we'll be asking for action on that on the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. - any questions? Okay. Item H, discussion of proposed list of assets to be disposed. Mr. Ingram?
I appreciate the mayor and council's patience, we were trying to put together a list of assets, there's just a few of them, a couple of vehicles and a couple of pieces of equipment that are no longer in use. I sent that out, I believe, thank you, Ms. Annie, uh, sent that out yesterday afternoon, uh, we're not asking for action tonight, the count, the auction is April twenty-sixth, Saturday, April twenty-sixth, at the fairgrounds, um, as it is usually, uh, so you have in front of you a, a list of those assets. I don't suspect there will be, but if there's another item or two to add to that, I'll immediately get that revised out to council, but we'll be asking for actual approval on, on, uh, April seventeenth.
Any questions, comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Mr. Peppers?
Just wanted to give you a couple of updates on some capital projects that we have. Um, our elevator, everything is done except for a little bit of wiring work that has to be, uh, completed next week, and then we're waiting, uh, the state to come out and do the final inspections on that. Uh, we do have, uh, the roofers out at one fifty-one Elizabeth Street on April ninth. Um, we have finished the framing in, uh, one fifty-one building where we had that water pipe break. The framing's done, the floor's been leveled, and we're working on the electrical right now. The Canton Theater is going to be having a, a big check ceremony from Fox, uh, Fox Theater Institute, uh, as you know, did a grant for, um, for our theater, they will have a ceremony on May seventh at five P.M., so we're working on putting that event together. Uh, on the downtown fire station, we're working on a ride-of-entry agreement with the DDA so that the county can get in the building, uh, on some quick work that they would like to get done. Proposals were received on March twenty-fourth for the fire station, uh, to the county, there were ten proposals that were submitted, so that group is reviewing those. We have requested monthly, uh, coordination meetings on the water pollution control plant with Clark Graves Young and Atkins, that will start on April the tenth. Uh, we also requested information from Veolia, the manufacturer of the membranes, uh, and, and some background from them, as well as some, um, background from Atkins on the seeding of those basins where we've had a couple of issues. Uh, I'm sure that will come up when you hear from them on the seventeenth. Uh, we did meet with Clark Graves Young, uh, last week and have a conversation with them about, uh, about some time impact analysis things that they have provided, uh, and I did have an opportunity to talk to the city attorney about that earlier today. Uh, the sewer vents came in today for Bluffs Parkway, recall, we're doing some odor control out there on the parkway, the vents were, um, delivered today, so I expect that project will kickstart here soon. We did get an email from resident at Great Sky letting us know that things had improved out there with the sewer odor, but the temperatures have also risen out there, so when the temperatures rise, we don't have as much odor control issues, when they fall, we do. Um, there is a collaboration meeting with Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority set for April the fourteenth, that was an item we talked about at the retreat. Uh, we are currently working on completing construction documents on the South Canton Water Tank. We did get the bids in on the five seventy-five and State Route twenty water line, uh, project that goes on the bridge out there. Uh, we are reviewing those bids, but they all appear lower than the, uh, than the construction estimate that we had first received. Um, we signed off on the grading and leveling of the fields out at Bowling Park, the baseball field, so that should start out in the next four to six weeks. Bids are due on May sixth for the North Canton Gymnasium, uh, and we expect a hundred percent drawings in the next couple of months at the South Canton Park. Uh, one item that I do need to bring to your attention and request potential action on, we did receive a request from, uh, the con, one of the contractors out at Tanner Place, they're getting ready to do a, uh, concrete pour out there, and they have made a request to the city to do an early morning pour on April tenth. Uh, as you know, working outside of routine work hours requires action of the council. They had originally asked to start the pouring at three A.M. Uh, we looked back, and the last project that we could find was at four A.M., uh, at the apartments at the old hospital site. Uh, so, staff would be okay with, uh, with an early pour on that day, starting at four A.M., but ultimately, it would take council action, because we do not have a meeting before then, uh, you would need to vote to add that, uh, as an agenda item and have a discussion on that.
Okay, and that's pour, that's for one day only?
That's for one day only, for pouring concrete at Tanner Place.
Okay. Would council like to add that item to the agenda? Have a motion?
Motion to add to the agenda. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, all members voted for the motion. So we now, uh, discuss the item?
As Mr. Pepper said, recommend four A.M. instead of three A.M., one day only, April tenth, which would be next Thursday?
That's correct.
Ms. McGee?
Thank you. Mr. Peppers, uh, have they given an estimate on how many loads they'll need to dump?
Uh, did they?
It was four hundred yard, which is about two or three loads.
And how many residents would be disturbed by this activity? And?
Uh, there, so there are a couple of houses on either side of the site, uh, they're not directly on the site. Part of the reason why I think they wanted to get the pouring in early is because you do have a lot of traffic on East Main Street, special traffic and things like that on school mornings, so the idea was to get in, get out before that-
Would four A.M. be enough time for them to get that work done?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Peppers, um, where on the site are they looking at pouring? I'm, I'm not clear on that.
I don't have the specific pad.
They didn't specify, uh, two, one, two, three, four, five. Furthest from the entrance? Could I just make a request that i-if it is furthest from the entrance at the property owner that abuts that, could be notified? Because we're going to hear about it.
Sure. We, we would notify him anyways.
Okay.
He, he is the closest resident to the site.
Yeah, okay.
Some staff did a, a site visit to, to Tanner Place yesterday, and I did notice, uh, one of the pads adjacent to the, uh, small train area, uh, was almost ready for a concrete pour, so I would suspect that might be of the pad that they're looking at pouring, is , uh, the structure that's, uh, furthest, uh, towards the back of the Canton Housing Authority property, they're framing on it.
Yeah. I don't mind getting a call at four oh five in the morning, I guess, if, uh, somebody's not aware of something, but-
I don't think the train runs that early, but. You have other questions? So we add to the agenda, would, uh, someone like to make a motion to approve the request or deny?
I'll make a motion to approve the request for out-of-hours pour. Second.
So motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? All members voted for the motion.
That is all that I have, unless you have any questions for me.
That's all? Not just, just those few things? Any questions for Mr. Peppers? Awesome. We had no council-introduced items, uh, we have one thing to report, our next meeting is April seventeenth, not August seventeenth, that's someone said earlier, so, but anyway, at this time, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.